Good evening and welcome to the November 27, 2017, meeting of the Florissant City Council. Please stand and join us on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, open republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Egan.
Here.
Caputa.
Here.
Shuldrough.
You.
Hanky.
Here.
Pagano.
Here.
Parson. Sam. Lee.
Here.
Jones.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes of November 13, 2017? Hearing non-consulminents, Parson moves to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Hanky. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue, not necessarily on the agenda this evening for three minutes. Please remember that this is not a question and answer, period, but if you would like to speak with one of us after the meeting, we would be happy to. John Engelmeier. Good evening.
Good evening. John Engelmeier, 1281 Graham Road. Tonight, I'd like to speak about the monthly operating statements versus the proposed budget. In looking and reviewing the proposed budget, what should be on the agenda tonight, and I won't discuss that now, but the monthly operating expenses, in comparison to the year-end information of the budget, is way out of skew. Next item is the 10-year plan for the city. To my knowledge, the 10-year plan is way out of date and needs to be brought up to date, and for the vision of the city and where we're going, part of the budget planning and budget process is for the vision of the city and where it's going to go. What I've seen from the budget work sessions, it has been deplorable, it's been tough, it's been issued, and yet, the other hand is the vision of the city does not look well. I rest upon the elected officials of this city to get it back in line and bring it back to focus to reach that dimension of our vision, our purpose of this city that was founded many years ago. Also, increasing the business licenses was an issue, has been brought up many times, and says it has to go before the vote of the people. Yet, bill number 9336, that's on tonight's agenda, does not have to go before the vote of the people. I don't understand the differences. Business licenses haven't been increased in many, many years, and yet, you provide services to the businesses of the city and no increase. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is communications, of which there are none. We will move on to public hearings. We have public hearing number 1711028.
In accordance with Section 405-310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 or St. Francois on Monday, November 27, 2017, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition: To authorize a special use permit to Five Acres, Five Aces Barbecue LLC DBA, Five Aces Barbecue, to allow for the operation of a restaurant in a B3 zoning district for the property located at 1752 and 1754 North Florissant Road. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing, be calling 839-7640, or 839-5142.
Mr. Sam.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know if I hit the button too soon or something, but I was just going to point out that this is actually in Ward 9 rather than Ward 6, as the agenda says, so that's all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you. Is the petitioner present? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Antonio C. Ellis, and I am the owner of Five Aces Barbecue. I currently have one location at 4000 Shaw in the city, South Side, three blocks east of Botanical Gardens, and I would like to thank you, first of all, for giving us the opportunity to be a part of the Florissant business community.
Did you want to show us any plans or anything? The overhead projector is there. You have to push the button on the top left, on your top left. You're going to turn that paper your way to where, no, the other way, like where you were standing.
Toward you.
Turn it towards you. No. All right. Push the button on the top left. There you go. And now, when you're standing at the mic that you were just talking to.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Put the paper facing you. Turn, nope, turn it. Yeah. Flip it. There you go. Okay.
Seems a little backwards.
A little nervous.
That's all right. No need to be nervous. Yeah, just tell us a little bit about it, where you're going, what you're doing. Oh, you need to hold the microphone or stand. There you go. We'll make it easy for you.
Eight years in the U.S. Air Force, and I spoke to thousands of people, and I'm just as nervous as I could be right now. Okay, so what we have here is the architectural drawings. Right here is where we have where a smoker is going to be in the back of the building, and there will be fencing around the back of the building, and that fencing will be colored the same color as the building. Right here, what we have is the indoor seating, of how the indoor seating will be, the bar area, the kitchen, along with all of the exits, as you can see right here, the handicap restrooms that will be made available, for both men and women.
I'm his partner as well. My name's Chris Alexander, and I'm a current resident of Florissant, Missouri. So right here is the previous drawings of what it currently looks like right now, and the page that he showed you before is going to be the after. And these are some of the different drawings that we plan on having. We're going to have a 17-foot-long bar. We're going to bump our kitchen out a little bit to come within three feet from the bar. We're going to have our plumbing, our slop sink and everything right here. We'll have two bathrooms that's going to be handicap accessible, and these are just some of the other drawings, just telling about the material that we're going to use, some of the material, the studs that we're going to use to build out the bathrooms, which would be metal studs. These are just different specs that we have, that we'll use, the nails and everything that will be coated according to Florissant and the county's code. So that's pretty much all of what we're going to have, and as he said, we're going to have the barbecue pit out back. We'll have it fenced in, and there'll be somebody out there at all times that will be watching it to make sure that no kids walk up to it, make sure there will be no incidents that will happen. And what we also do is we'll have it on a trailer so that we can pull it away every night as well, but also, part of our program of our restaurant that we're going to have, we're going to try to do other things with inside of the Florissant community, as I'm a resident, to try to network with other different companies and businesses out here and do some type of programs. We'll have a bar and we'll have barbecue, but we'll also have health food on there, which would also help us reach out to a diverse community of people that like to eat, and that's what we plan to do.
So is it dine-in and carry-out?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry-out also?
Yeah, we're going to do dine-in, we're going to do carry-out. I'm to both.
What's your specialty?
Anything that I put in my mouth.
Which one? Is it ribs, is it?
Well, it'll be ribs, it'll be a barbecue. What we're going to try to do is we're going to try to blend the two together, whereas if you've got one friend who's maybe a vegan or vegetarian or who's a conscious eater, or maybe you've got a friend that wants to just have some good old-fashioned barbecue over a good wood-smoked.
That's right.
They'll be able to come together and enjoy together.
Sounds good. Wait, well, you're going to have a lot of people talking in just a second.
Well, at my current location, I do have hundreds of Florissant customers, and a lot of them are excited, so.
Good. Mr. Jones.
First off, welcome, you guys. We're glad you're moving into our city. Another thing I'd like to mention, you guys, we do have a food pantry named Team, so please keep that in mind, it's a couple streets over from here. Another thing I'd like to ask you guys about is the trash dumpsters in the back.
Why?
You say, "Are they?"
Yes.
Yes, sir.
There's one there now.
I've already had one put in place.
Okay. And then, we tried to push this on most businesses, as far as trash cans at the front door, you guys, so when people are exiting or coming in, we don't get trash over the parking lots and stuff like that.
There's one already there.
Great, that sounds great. What about a grease pit? Have we talked about that? Will we be doing any deep frying?
No.
No deep frying, so no grease pit.
Fire inside of the building with barbecue, and sites that don't require any open flames or any grease.
Okay, great. Thanks, guys, and like I said, welcome to our city.
Thank you.
Mr. Egan.
Thank you very much. Welcome, welcome, fellows. What will your hours of operation be?
I would say 5:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and the reason why I have to say 5:00 is because I do have to prep.
Right.
And from what I understand, I don't want Florissant Police Department to be riding by, and I'm in there, and, you know, so it's just to avoid anything.
What hours will you normally be serving though, from?
From 11:00 until around 1:00.
And I believe you said there'll be alcohol served there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. On the, you said there'd be different events. Do you plan on having music or bands or anything like that there?
Yes, sir. There is a staged area that I, I'm a drummer by trade, so, but yes, we will have some bands.
I hope that we're respectful of the neighbors, keeping doors and such closed.
It'll be more like jazz, so it won't be nothing loud, and it won't be playing outside, and we'll have the doors closed at all times.
Okay, very good. Last question, give me one example of health food.
Chicken-free, gluten-free, no pork, no beef, skinless chicken breasts, kale.
We're going to go with the chicken breast, we don't need any kale. Thank you. Good luck, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Caputa.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, on your pit back there, I know you're going to have a fence around it, are you going to have a pavilion structure over that, keep it out of the elements?
The pit that I have, it's just like the ones at Dearburg's, to where it doesn't open up, they open from the doors just swing open, so it's, the food is already protected.
But for the workers, you don't, you know, just let them stand out in the rain, is it?
Oh. I'm the pit master. Nobody does my cooking but me, I'm the only one I trust in my 12-year-old.
There you go. So you're not going to have a pavilion or a little, like, roof over that?
I could have a, get one of those.
We could have one, but you guys need one.
I mean, it's not required, I was just asking, because I don't see it on the plan, so I was just wondering.
No, sir, but the way the pit is, it's, it's, it was custom-made in Texas, and it has, already has the lips for the roof over it, but the elements can't get into it. I've had this pit for four years, elements can't get into it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Shuldrough.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Ellis, thanks for thinking about Florissant.
Thank you, sir.
Could you tell me how long you've been in business with the one on Shaw?
I've been in business for two, going on two years, the location on Shaw, but before that, I started cooking out in my backyard and started street vending, going to tailgates, and lo and behold, God blessed us with the brick and mortar.
Okay. On your liquor license, are you trying to get a full one or just beer and wine?
A full liquor license.
Full, okay. And Mr. Jones, echo my question about the trash can, because that's what we're trying to do, and I appreciate you thinking about Florissant, and I wish y'all luck in the world, sir.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Mr. Hanky.
Questions have been answered. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Parson.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Ellis and, it was Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay. As far as, you mentioned some fencing in the back for the, I guess, for the pit. What type of fencing is going to be there, and is it like wrought iron, or are you guys doing wood, or what type of fencing? What's going on?
No, sir. It will actually, since the pit is on a trailer, on a mobile trailer, it's going to be gone every day, every night, actually, so my idea was to go ahead and get the plastic fencing put around it, or go ahead and secure something in the concrete, and whether it be wood that we can paint or what have you, but it's going to be something simple. It's not going to be anything extravagant.
Okay, okay. And you mentioned that it was going to be a certain color, what color is it going to be?
Brick red, that's the color of the building.
Okay, okay. And also, I guess, for that building, everybody's required to have the same type of signage and all that stuff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, my son takes karate right next to where you guys are going to be, so you'll probably see me a lot. Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Sam.
Thank you, Madam President. Regarding the dumpsters in back, a couple people have already asked you about, were you by any chance required to keep yours in an enclosure, in a wooden enclosure, or some kind of screening or anything like that?
No, sir.
Okay. Would it be possible for us to require that? Can we do that?
None of the other dumpsters have, they're not in anything.
The only thing that's enclosed is debris trapped, that's from Showmies, but everybody else is.
Yeah, Showmies has one. Okay.
Are the other ones in that strip?
Only Showmies, only Showmies has it.
Down at the whole other end?
Yeah.
Is that something Mr. has that we can require?
You can, obviously, you have to look at the location, you have the businesses back there within the discretion of the county. I think how it is now, until you spoke.
Let me turn, okay, now, go ahead.
I think the way it is set up now, you guys, it does not have to have closing gates, but it has to have an enclosure around it, screened in.
Okay, that's not a problem.
Right. And the one that's there now does not have that?
No, we just had it delivered out.
Did you have more? Do you?
No, that was my only question.
Mr. Parson.
Yes, Madam President. Just based on Tommy's question, my only concern about requiring an enclosure is that there's not a whole bunch of space where that building is up to the creek, so I don't even know if that's even possible to be a requirement, and still have trash trucks to be able to get back there and do what they need to do, but I, you know, I guess it's no harm in investigating it, but it'd probably be difficult.
If I may add, what we did was, the dumpster was in the back, but to avoid in case a fire truck has to come and make that wide turn, it's closer to the building, like the ones next door, the four or five next door to us, so I felt like that would be the safest thing to do, instead of leaving it where the company had it in the back by the grassy area, I just had them to move it close to the building, so when we go out the kitchen door, it's right there.
As the city clerk just told me, we can just, it is only on for a first reading tonight, so we will discuss it with Public Works and maybe get, you know, their input on it too, and then maybe take another look at where it's, you know, we'll have a chance to go take a look, okay, before we would make that. Is that okay? Mr. Lee.
Thank you. I was just curious, have you contacted the St. Louis County Health Department for a variance on the outdoor cooking?
Yes, I have. We got some paperwork to do 10 days before it comes out and approval of everything we're going to use, including the material that we're going to use, for even things like our bar and valve film tile and things like that, and it's, you'll use.
Okay, what I'm talking about is, it's my understanding that St. Louis County would require the Restaurant Commission to issue a variance to have outside food preparation, like you mentioned Dearburg's. Dearburg's had to go to the Restaurant Commission and get a variance in order to prepare food outside, so you may want to double-check with County Health Department to make sure.
The food going to be prepared outside, the food, there's a kitchen.
The smokers, the smoker.
We have a kitchen.
You're not going to be smoking the meat outside?
Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, when I hear prep, I thought it was.
No, I'm sorry, no. Any outdoor, any outdoor food, I say preparation, cooking, whatever.
Understood.
I believe it requires a variance from the County Restaurant Commission, so I'd really, really advise you, we had had a similar situation where a restaurant wanted to do the smokers, and the commission only meets like four times a year, and so they had to wait like four months to get on an agenda to get the variance to be able to do the smoking outside, so I'd get ahold of them right away and make sure you understand the rules.
I got ahold of them with that. We have to be within, away from 750 feet from the nearest building in order to have the smoking outside.
From the nearest residential.
From the nearest residential, I'm sorry, from the nearest house, and we're past that 750 feet.
Okay. For outside food, I'm not talking about for the smoking, I'm talking about for the outside, outside food, as long as you're okay, that's fine, but.
Right, it's 750 feet, because I have to have the same thing, the variance done in the city for that.
Okay. That's all I have.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Mr. Ellis, you're probably going to have to hand him the mic and go back and forth.
My name's Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane. As far as the trash dumpsters go, in a shopping center, I don't believe they have to be enclosed, I'm not sure, but if they do have to be enclosed, then they got a lot of checking to do, Grandview, Villa del Cresta, all these places that have not only dumpsters, but they've got different trash haulers, so I don't believe that there's any problem with not being enclosed behind the shopping center. I don't think that that is, I thought that was more or less like a freestanding building, like Jack in the Box or McDonald's or something like that, I'm not sure.
Right, that's what we're going to check with Public Works.
That's the only thing that I, so if you check into that and find out that it has to be enclosed, then they got to go through a bunch, a bunch of dumpsters, because at Grandview behind Subway and that little place next door, they don't even have a dumpster, they take their stuff and dump it in somebody else's dumpster.
Right, thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. You're probably able to clip that on, because I don't see anyone else, so seeing no further comments, consulminents, I am moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? This public hearing is now closed. Thank you and good luck, guys. The next item on the agenda is old business. The first item under old business is second readings. We have bill number 9318. Consulman Shuldrough moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Discussion? You're moving to postpone? Consulman Jones moves to postpone till December, seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We have bill number 9322. Consulman Egan moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Parson. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing an amendment to ordinance number 6830 to allow for a restaurant with outdoor dining for the property located at 8180 North Limburg.
Consulman Egan moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing an amendment to ordinance number 6830 to allow for a restaurant with outdoor dining for the property located at 8180 North Limburg.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Egan.
Aye.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shuldrough.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Sam. Lee. Jones.
Yes.
Bill number 9322 passes and becomes ordinance number 8362. Bill number 9323? I'm getting to that. Thank you very much. Consulman Hanky moves for a second reading, seconded by myself. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 8163 from HRLH Incorporated DBA Viet Thai to Ao Lang LLC DBA Thai Kitchen for the operation of a sit-down, carry-out restaurant located at 8458 North Limburg.
Consulman Egan moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 8163 from HRLH Incorporated DBA Viet Thai to Ao Lang LLC DBA Thai Kitchen for the operation of a sit-down, carry-out restaurant located at 8458 North Limburg.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Egan. Caputa.
Yes.
Shuldrough.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Sam. Lee. Jones.
Yes.
Bill number 9323 passes and becomes ordinance number 8363. Bill number 9324, I will move for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Bless you.
Ordinance approving the Community Development Block Grant, fiscal year 2018 Annual Action Plan for the City of Florissant, Missouri, and authorizing and directing the mayor to submit such plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
I will move for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor? Right. Opposed?
Ordinance approving the Community Development Block Grant, fiscal year 2018 Annual Action Plan for the City of Florissant, Missouri, and authorizing and directing the mayor to submit such plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Egan.
Aye.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shuldrough.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Sam. Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Bill number 9324 passes and becomes ordinance number 8364. We have substitute bill 9325. Consulman Lee moves to accept this substitute bill number 9325. Seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, and the substitute bill is accepted. Consulman Lee moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Ordinance adopting the budget for the City of Florissant for the fiscal year commencing on December 1, 2017, and ending on November 30, 2018, and providing for its effective date.
Consulman Lee moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Sam. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Ordinance adopting the budget for the City of Florissant for the fiscal year commencing on December 1, 2017, and ending on November 30, 2018, and providing for its effective date.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this?
John Engelmeyer, twelve eighty-one Graham Road. As in the past, I've spoken about many budgets in previous years, and once again for this year, I'm not gonna pass up the opportunity. In the proposed budget in the work sessions, the city council did an outstanding job of trying to deliberate, discuss, and try to refine a bill for the budget for this fiscal year. In doing that, I did some research in terms of budgets, and the reason for a municipal budget to be passed, and one of the words, the key words is planning. At your work sessions, a lot of times it was planning for the future, the tomorrows, and what to do with the funds, the money, and what the results were going to be, and to involve and promote effective communication with the stakeholders, which are the citizens. The municipal budget should provide incentive to government and to management. What I saw in the presentation of the proposed budget to the city council was nothing else but a football play. It was dodge and weave, and the information provided to the CU, the city council, was short of coming, of information to make a good decision in an appropriate manner for a budget. It won't do any good to go over each line item of the budget, because it's already done. It's already in writing, it's already substituted. One thing I did discuss the last time at the work session was bank service charges. I don't know what came out of that discussion, or if there's been a revision or a decrease of bank service charges. The other factor was a lobbyist that the city of Florissant has in Jefferson City by the name of Tim Green, former senator for North County, who now lives in St. Charles, and North County Inc., who the executive director for North County Inc. lives in St. Charles. We are selling our souls to the devil. I want somebody here to represent us in North County, in St. Louis County, and to work for us in terms of the demographics, the infrastructure, and promoting North County. I don't see that Mr. Green has done much. He comes here for an annual review, which does not allow citizens to ask or follow up with questions. We belong to the St. Louis County Municipal League and the League of Mayors, which should be adequate enough to provide the information to you as city council members, elected officials, not necessarily to me as a citizen. But as I have, and I have forwarded emails to various city council members from my representatives, from the various areas of Missouri, I'm up to date. I stay abreast of it by the communication of my representatives. The representatives that we've had here, from Michael Mayor, who's now been replaced, and then Keith English, who's then been replaced, and we have now two new individuals who's not come before the city council, who's not come before us, and tell us what is going on with North County. Today, Stanger showed up at the Jamestown Mall area on a renovation or some suggestions about North County. North County has been kicked around, and we've been lost, and I see no leadership within this city to promote us in terms of municipal league, in terms of North County Inc., or our lobbyists, or our other elected representatives on both on the county level and on the state level. In terms of this proposed budget, there was twenty-four thousand dollars allocated to a lobbyist. I think that's a waste of money. Think we ought to dedicate that money to someplace else. Also to follow up on the question of business licenses. Business licenses have not been increased, and yet, like I said earlier, in today's agenda, tonight, there's fees that are going to be increased, and again, it doesn't have to go before the vote of the people, so why does a business license have to go before the vote of the people? I don't understand the differences, and yet, it's happening. As I said to you, the monthly operating statement, what I show here in terms of, and it's a subject that we don't want to touch, but I will touch upon it, and that's court. Our city court fines, fees, in terms of our operating statement, monthly operating statement, October thirty-first, is down. We're at seventy-two point six-four percent of what we should be at eleven-twelve of a percent, and we're not. Our court fees are declining, and again, for what reason, we can't discuss on the advice of our city attorney. Municipal court on the budget is down to eleven hundred dollars. So far this year, I don't believe we're gonna even hit that number. Going into it detail by detail is worthless, because like I said, I've stood here many a time and gave my opinion, and I thank Ms. Pagano in terms of offering at the end of each work session, an opportunity for citizens to speak, which Mr. Egan started several years ago, to provide a citizen input. But the input sometimes falls upon death ears, but it falls upon administration to exercise a prudent and reasonable way of administering the budget. I've questioned over and over again the purposes of having a vendor, a supplier contributing to your campaigns, and then dealing business with the city. It is wrong, in my opinion. It's a conflict of interest, and yet it occurs frequently, particularly with the mayor. Looking at the political Missouri Ethics Commission reporting, many of our vendors, suppliers, contribute to you as elected officials, which again, in my opinion, is wrong. Conflict of interest. Many companies in St. Louis have restrictions on accepting of anything from a vendor or supplier because of conflict of interest. I'd like to see something moved on to this and changed, and I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hassel, can you give an explanation of the fees of the business license and the other fees?
Sure. Is the microphone on?
Yep.
Oh, good.
It is, see? That's one step ahead. Imagine that.
Years ago, the voters adopted what's referred to as the Hancock Amendment, which precluded any increase in any fees or licenses or taxes of any kind. The Supreme Court, I think it was in nineteen eighty-nine roughly, interpreted that provision to distinguish fees that are paid on an annual basis, that are obligatory, like our taxes that we pay on an annual basis, and determined that those kinds of fees, like business licenses, have to go to the voters for any increases. Fees for services, such as going to the parks, going to the community center, paying a fee to the community center is not a tax, because I elect to do that. I get something in return immediately when I go. I get the benefit of the community center. Those kinds of fees can be increased, so you have to look at each and every individual fee to determine whether or not, under the Supreme Court decision, it is deemed to be comparable to a tax, and if it is, it needs voter approval. If it's a fee comparable to a fee for service, then it does not need voter approval. So that's the kind of analysis that the city council and I have to go through each and every time we analyze those kinds of fees. The courts have been confronted with business license fees and have clearly determined that that is analogous to a tax, and they cannot be increased without voter approval.
All right, thanks. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mr. Engelmeyer, I just wanted to let you know that the Port Authority had a meeting for elected officials today before everybody else was there, and there was someone there, myself, representing our city.
Thank you. Hearing no further comments, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote. Egan?
Aye.
Caputa?
Go.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Cyam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
Substitute bill number ninety-three twenty-five passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-three sixty-five. Bill number ninety-three twenty-six, Councilman Lee moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. Any discussion? Mr. Egan, whoops.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'm gonna make two separate motions on this bill. The first motion would be the language in section one of the bill itself. I would like to change fifteen years of service to twenty years of service, and three lines down, I would like to change fifty percent of accrued sick time to twenty-five percent of sick time accrued. That's my motion.
Mr. Hanky, seconding that. Are we still on discussion notes before he does that? Is there a re...
Yeah, yeah. For justification, first of all, I have some concerns about the number of employees that would be taking this. I think it's forty-something that would be eligible. I guess my concern is a sudden depletion of the workforce might be catastrophic to the workforce and the ability for the city to offer services. I think in a lot of positions and careers, you can serve twenty years as a basis by which to judge whether you worked at a place for a pensionable amount of time. And again, with the twenty-five percent, I think twenty-five percent, and I looked at the studies from around municipalities, twenty-five percent on the dollar for the sick time buyback is reasonable, in my opinion. I would also suggest that if my emotions would take the ability down from forty employees to roughly twenty employees, give or take, and if we did not see what we thought was a good return on that, I'd be willing to come back and take a look at that in December or January.
Okay. I don't seem to have a big problem with the fifty to the twenty-five. I do have a problem more with the fifteen to the twenty. This is a voluntary?
This is a voluntary program. I think...
Exactly, so you're not guaranteed that the forty-one are going to leave?
Correct, but this would mean that a person who started with the city roughly at age forty cannot retire with the, get incentive to leave, and it just doesn't seem quite right to me. But if I have...
But it would be all right at sixty to leave? That's my thing. It's all right at sixty to leave, but not at fifty-five? I don't understand the reasoning. That's my, I'm just asking for...
My reasoning, I think that twenty years is a way you earn an incentive, and that's my opinion.
Okay. That's it. Maybe, Mr. Hanky?
Yeah, Joe, just to kind of back up, Joe, I think there's a little bit of fear. I think everybody's behind this, this incentive, because we're looking to cut some money out of the budget, and this is a key way to do it. I think there's a little bit of fear that it might be too successful, and I think that's that fear if it's too successful and too many people go. I think what Joe alluded to is that if we don't get enough, then possibly we'll come right back maybe with the fifteen, but if you go with the, if we go with the fifteen and we get too many people go at the first time, I'm just afraid it'd be too popular. We can always come back and take a second bite of the apple if we don't get enough, but if everybody that's eligible takes this, it could be devastating to the workforce.
I don't see it that way, but okay. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, Mr. Egan, so you're offering both of these in one amendment, because I would support the twenty-five percent, but I can't support the change in years, so I just want to verify that. You said you were offering two amendments, but this will be an amendment on both of those at one time?
You know, I'm willing to read, to pull that and go with it if it's more palatable. I'll be willing to go with the, to separate those two in separate amendments, and then I'll have a third amendment as well, so.
Okay.
I'll draw my amendment, and Mr. Egan will draw his second.
I will offer the amendment of, the first one, the first amendment I would offer is section number one, twenty years to fifteen years.
No, fifteen to twenty.
Excuse me, fifteen to twenty. My year, I got confused. Fifteen to twenty.
And I have Mr. Hanky seconding that, right? So should we vote on that amendment?
Correct. You discussed that proposed amendment, meaning changing the years of service from fifteen to twenty.
Okay. So, Mr. Lee, you're still on?
Yeah, the one, the only comment I make, Mr. Egan, on the fifteen to twenty is that under the current retirement plan of the city of Florissant, an employee that's fifty-five with fifteen years of service is eligible to retire, and so this is just an incentivization for that retirement. And I don't think that number of people are gonna retire, but I could be wrong as well, so I can't support that change. However, if you offer a future amendment, I will consider that, but...
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, so we're going to vote on the amended change, correct?
On the, yes, on the twenty, fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen to twenty. All right, so that's a roll call? Or what?
It does not have to be a roll call.
Doesn't have to be.
On a motion to amend.
All right.
It does not.
So...
So it would be all in favor of amending section one by changing the years of service to fifteen to twenty.
Okay, so all in favor of...
Aye, no.
No. Opposed? No.
Now we have a roll call.
Now we'll have a roll call. I figured that was gonna happen, so...
Well, you should have just...
That's why I would, I, see?
Okay.
All right, roll call, please.
Okay. Egan?
Aye.
Caputa?
No.
Shuldrough?
No.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
No.
Parsons?
Yes.
Cyam?
No.
Lee?
No.
Jones?
No.
Motion fails.
Six-three.
Ma'am, I have a second motion.
All right.
Second amendment, motion for a second amendment.
Okay.
I would amend section one to read entitled to a payment equal to twenty-five percent accrued sick time instead of fifty percent. I would amend it twenty-five percent to fifty percent.
All right, seconded by Mr. Shuldrough. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Oh.
Just one, okay.
And to put this one to bed, I'll add one more motion. If you entertain that, please.
Okay.
Section number two, paragraph number five reads, "All nonessential positions vacated by retirement will be eliminated." I would like to change the word "will" to "may."
Who is seconding that? Mr. Hanky?
And for matter of discussion, I just think by doing this, we're administering from the legislative branch of the government, and I think that the administration should still have the opportunity to do what they need in a timely manner to provide services for our citizens.
Mr. Hanky?
Yeah, I agree with that as far as legislating the administration on this, and I think it ties the hands too much when you would just say "will," because it kind of eliminates any possibility that if we understand, that there's a position that we need to fill. If the literal reading of this means that no matter what, we cannot fill it, and that's why I say I think "may" would be, if there's a position that we say, hey, look, we need four guys on this crew, three's not gonna make it, so for this, we need another guy on this. This "will," my reading is that you can't do that, then there is no discretion. It will be eliminated, the position. "May," I think, gives some kind of discretion to say, okay, we need this fourth guy on this crew. This position here, we have to fill. This one, maybe we don't, but it's, it gives a discretion where it belongs, I believe.
Can I, will you chime in on this for me, Mr. Hassel, being legal?
Legally, the obligatory term is "shall." So if it read "shall be eliminated," Mr. Hanky is correct, that there is no discretion. "Will" does provide discretion. Now, "may" is frequently used in lieu of "will" to avoid any confusion about it, but legally, "may" and "will" are virtually, they're not identical, but they're virtually synonymous.
Oh, okay, okay, but if...
So it's helpful from an understanding standpoint. Mr. Egan's amendment is helpful, but it doesn't change it much.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Lee?
And I think during the earlier discussions, the consensus of the council was is that when this whole thing shakes out, we hoped to eliminate certain positions. If you look at the stipulations above, when there is an essential position, it can be filled, and it can actually be filled immediately with council approval. So we've really not taken away, we've actually left it semi-vague by saying that those positions that are nonessential will not be filled, so I'm comfortable with the language the way it is, and I will be supporting the current language, so...
Mr. Egan?
Thank you. My response to that, Mr. Lee, would simply be that should there be an emergency situation, I would hate to have to wait for two weeks to get permission from the council to fill a position that we need to fill right away. That's all I have. Well, we would have to wait till the next council meeting to get permission.
So two weeks would be too long to wait?
Again, I said, if there was an emergent situation, I, and again, I think that it takes the, the branches of government, the separation of the branches of government, and, and really has us serving as the administrators of the, of the government, and we're really the legislative branch. It's just my opinion.
If I may, Council President-
Oh, yeah, chime in, please.
Well, and again, I, I think this whole discussion about "will" and "shall" and "may" is a justification for changing the word from "will" to "may," because as I said, legally, they are virtually synonymous. But obviously, the general public, the normal person, if I could put it that way, doesn't read it always that way. So to avoid confusion down the line, if it is the intent of the city council to have it discretionary, Phil, not obligatory, I'll put it that way, then I would recommend that the council seriously consider inserting the word "may" for "will." See, when I read it, I understand that it is virtually synonymous with "may." When somebody else, like I said, a normal person, non-lawyer, reads it, they may not understand that.
Okay.
Mr. Hessel? So who, who would make the determination under "may"?
Ultimately, it'd be the administration.
All right. I have another legal authority over there, Mr. Parson.
That's correct.
I don't know if you can call me legal authority, but I'll, I'll take a shot at it.
I'm, I'm going for you.
From what I'm hearing from Mr. Hessel, is that, you know, basically, there's no difference between "will" and "may."
If there, if Mr. Lee wants to make this more obligatory, he probably should be suggesting
that it change from "will" to "shall," to put more teeth behind things, if I'm not overstepping what I'm saying, what you're saying. But, I mean, is that what you're trying to accomplish, or are you still trying to leave some?
Well, then I'll, I'll amend Mr. Egan's motion to say that change the word to "shall."
You can't amend his motion. That has to be voted on as to whether or not you're going to amend it into "may." That's voted on, and then if you subsequently want to amend the bill-
We had a lot of motions that were amended during the budget session.
And we have a lot of "will, may" and "should."
Okay, well, I will withhold my-
The only time I've allowed, well, I should say, I allowed, the only time Karen has allowed the amendment to the motion is when the maker of the motion amends it or agrees to a proposed amendment.
We had a whole bunch of them during budget that that didn't happen.
Well, then Roberts', Roberts' rule of order didn't quite-
I agree with the-
No, I was there.
We were, we were overruled during those-
That didn't happen when I was there.
I'm sticking up for our city clerk right now, and I don't think that happened while she was there. I was recommending. She did stop.
Right.
Okay, so just tell me where, where, where-
You have a motion to amend section two subsection five, so that it would now, if the amendment is passed, it would read, "All nonessential positions vacated by retirement may be eliminated."
May be eliminated. Mr. Egan has made the most in to change the ma-
No, he changed it from "will" to "may."
Oh, Lord. Seconded by Mr. Hanky. So we should-
I think with Shildroth-
Let's do a roll call. Make it easy.
All right.
I'm still, I'm, one more time.
You do? Okay. Well, you're still on, so go ahead.
Okay. First, Jen, thank you for putting me in the category of a normal person reading, because I really appreciate that.
All non-lawyers, no offense, Mr. Parson, are deemed to be normal.
Ah, so, and if I'm hearing you right, then "will" and "may" are somewhat interchangeable. It's just for clarification for, so that the layperson reads this and understands what the intent is.
Correct. Thank you. My only comment was that this discussion causes me to believe that there may be confusion if you leave the word "will" in there.
Well, okay, so we need a roll call vote for this motion.
Ready?
Bill five.
Okay. Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
No.
Shildroth?
No.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pogano?
No.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Lee?
No.
Jones?
No.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Okay.
Then I would move to amend it to change the word to "shall."
All right. Mr. Lee is making a motion to change it to "shall," seconded by Mr. Jones. So now I believe we need another roll call. Do we need discussion, or we're just done with discussions? Oh, Mr. Parson?
I, I just want to make things clear here. I was not in favor of the "will," and that's why I did not vote for that. So I don't want you guys looking at me like I'm crazy later when this vote comes up.
Oh, Lordy. Wait, wait just a minute, Mr. Lee, go ahead.
Yeah, if this, based on Mr. Hessel's analogy, I, I think this could clarify it, then. So I'll support "shall."
I'm just looking at his face over there, wondering if it does clarify it, okay?
It clarifies it, I'm just trying to make sure that it is not in conflict with the charter. That's what I was wrestling with. Because you now have the city council involved in, arguably, you have the city council involved in personnel matters.
Roll call.
Wait just a minute. Mr. Parson?
I mean, if there is a possibility, based on what council is stating to us now, that it may be in conflict with the charter, I think we need to get some confirmation on that before we take an actual vote. That's just my thought about it. I would like some certainty before we make a final decision. But of course, that's only, that's only my view on things.
And I'm very comfortable with the, with the proposal as it's moved forward over a period of months, in that this is a council program that the council is initiating with a specific, with a specific outcome that the council is doing. And so, just like if we would say during a budget process, we're going to eliminate a, the manager of the golf course, we can eliminate that position, or if we're going to eliminate another position, we're going to eliminate the position. We do that all the time in budget proceedings, and so this is a vacant position that would have, which would ultimately not, not be filled, and I'm not going to put Mr. Hessel on the hook for a legal opinion, but I'm comfortable that it, that it will not be a violation of the charter. That's my opinion, so.
Well, I guess I, I want to put him on the hook here for a second. Is there any precedent that you're seeing that there might be a problem with this and conflicting, conflicting with the charter?
There is no precedent, because this is, at least to my knowledge, and I've been doing this a long time for the City of Florissant, I'm not aware of any similar legislation that I've ever seen. Now, I will say that as I read section two, it indicates that positions deemed essential by the mayor may require someone to be assigned temporarily, and positions deemed essential by the mayor may be posted for hiring or proposed effective. I would then read subsection five, so that everybody knows that all nonessential positions would similarly be determined by the mayor will be eliminated. If that is a correct interpretation of your legislation, then it is not in conflict with the charter.
So-
And I think they naturally follow.
So would you recommend that we leave the current verbiage, or change it to "shall"? Or does it matter?
I was much more comfortable with "will."
Then I withdraw my motion.
The only reason, and I apologize for injecting myself so much on this.
I withdraw my motion.
Well, Mr. Egan, did you still want to comment, now that he withdrew?
If it's a moot point, we're just wasting time.
All right. So now we're just voting as, as is with the one amendment in it, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So before we take the, should have we even been on the other readings? We're on the final vote?
We're on, yeah, no.
No?
No, we haven't.
We're not even on the final vote, we're, shoot, okay.
It's as amended, I think, to include the twenty-five percent rather than the fifty, but other than that, no other amendment was passed.
Right, so I need to read it a second time, as amended.
All right. So we have an all in favor of reading for the second time with the amended one? We had the motions.
You had the motions, you had discussion, you haven't done the all in favor yet.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
There you go.
Okay, sorry.
Ordinance authorizing a one-time retirement incentive opportunity for the City of Florissant full-time employees who qualify.
Councilman Lee moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a one-time retirement incentive opportunity for the City of Florissant full-time employees who qualify.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak?
Thank you. Is this a one-time offer? Is that just for 2019 budget, or is that, will this come up again next year? That's, I didn't think about it until the way it was read tonight. Is it going to be-
Right now, it's just a one-time offer.
One-time only.
Right, yeah, 2018, not 19. 2018.
I mean, that's what I mean. So they could come up again in 19, right?
I don't know what's going to happen in 19, but yes.
Well, I have an idea, but I don't know. My crystal ball's broke.
Mine, too, so I have no idea.
I was just curious if it was going to be like a one-time offer just this year, or if it's going to be a, an ongoing offer maybe later on, if it, if it takes off okay? You know, that's all.
Again, I have no idea.
Okay.
Just 2018 as of now. All right. Hearing no further comments, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Aye.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Lee? Jones?
Yes.
Bill number ninety-three twenty-six passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-three sixty-six. Substitute bill number ninety-three twenty-eight. I will move to accept the substitute bill number ninety-three twenty-eight, seconded by Mr. Parson. All in favor? All right, opposed? Motion carried, and the substitute bill is accepted. I will move for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Sayam. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Ordinance amending section one-two-five-zero-six-five-A job classification and grade level by adding and deleting certain job classifications.
I will move for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Sayam. All in favor? Opposed?
Ordinance amending section one-two-five-zero-six-five-A job classification and grade level by adding and deleting certain job classifications.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Aye.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Substitute bill number ninety-three twenty-eight passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-three sixty-seven. Bill number ninety-three twenty-nine. Councilman Shildroth moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Hanky. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Ordinance amending ordinance number eighty-one eighty-two, which establishes compensation plan for part-time employees of the City of Florissant, which contains an effective date clause.
Councilman Shildroth moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor? Opposed?
Ordinance amending ordinance number eighty-one eighty-two, which establishes compensation plan for part-time employees of the City of Florissant, and which contains an effective date clause.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Aye.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill number ninety-three twenty-nine passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-three sixty-eight. Bill number ninety-three thirty. Councilman Sayam moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
No.
Ordinance amending ordinance number eighty-one eighty-two, establishing a length of service plan for part-time employees by adding a position of economic development coordinator.
Councilman Jones moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Sayam. All in favor? Aye, opposed?
No.
Ordinance amending ordinance number eighty-one eighty-two, establishing a length of service plan for the part-time employees by adding a position of economic development coordinator.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Hearing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
No.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bill number ninety-three thirty passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-three sixty-nine. The next item on the agenda is new business. First item under new business is board appointments. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a board appointment to make tonight, but I'd like to ask Mr. Egan to find someone for the Environmental Quality Commission. We just had a resignation, and I'd like to ask wards eight, one, five, or seven, I've had this out since last August, to replace Mr. Chapel on the Disability Awareness Commission. Thanks. It was Mr. Chapel, who's been there a long time, and- EQC was Mr. Wilson.
Thank, okay. The next item on the agenda is request. Councilman Shildroth moves to approve the request for Patrick Kelly to keep two hens at twelve fifteen Patrice Lane, seconded by myself. All in favor? All right. Mr. Shildroth, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I did go by Mr. Kelly's house three times yesterday and tonight before the meeting, and he wasn't home, but I am going to still go ahead and approve this, because staff gave it their blessing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have the all in favor? Aye, opposed? I'm sorry. Aye, opposed? I'm sorry. Motion carried, and the permit is approved. Councilman Lee moves to approve the request for Joseph and Susan Gerling to keep four hens located at 1575 Harkey, seconded by Mr. Jones. Mr. Lee?
I also had an opportunity to go by and look at the area, and I have a feeling that Joe is going to be keeping the pen clean while Susan harvests the eggs, so. Just my thought.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried, and the permit is approved. Bills for first reading, bill number 9332.
Ordinance to repeal selected sections of ordinance number 8318 and all ordinance in conflict therewith pertaining to wage range and job classification for full-time uniformed employees and containing an effective date clause.
Seconded by Mr. Oh, sorry. Councilman moves for, Childrath moves for a second reading.
There you go.
Have a second. Oh, seconded by Mr. Egan. Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Ordinance to repeal selected sections of ordinance number 8318 and all ordinances in conflict therewith pertaining to wage range and job classification for full-time uniformed employees and containing an effective date clause.
Councilman Childrath moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. Roll call, roll call, please.
Egan?
Aye.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childrath?
Yes.
Henke? Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ordinance to repeal selected sections of ordinance number 8318 and all ordinances in conflict therewith pertaining to wage range and job classification for full-time uniformed employees and containing an effective date clause.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Aye.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childrath?
Yes.
Henke? Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill number 9332 passes and becomes ordinance number 8370. Bill number 9333?
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $13,000 to account number 4110 Municipal Court salaries to cover salaries through the balance of the fiscal year.
Councilman Childrath moves for a second reading, seconded by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $13,000 to account number 4110 Municipal Court salaries to cover salaries through the balance of the fiscal year.
Councilman Childrath moves for a third reading, seconded by myself. Roll call, please.
Egan?
Aye.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childrath?
Yes.
Henke? Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $13,000 to account number 4110 Municipal Court salaries to cover salaries through the balance of the fiscal year.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childrath?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill number 9333 passes and becomes ordinance number 8371. Bill number 9334?
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Five Aces Barbecue LLC DBA Five Aces Barbecue to allow for the operation of a restaurant located at 1752 and 1754 North New Florissant Road.
Bill number 9335?
Ordinance to authorize the City of Florissant to accept ownership of real estate property located at 3115 Parker Road gifted to the city through general warranty deed.
I will move for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Childrath. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Ordinance to authorize the City of Florissant to accept ownership of real estate property located at 3115 Parker Road gifted to the city through general warranty deed.
I will move for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Childrath. Roll call, please.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childrath?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Ordinance to authorize the City of Florissant to accept ownership of real estate property located at 3115 Parker Road gifted to the city through a general warranty deed.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childrath?
Yes.
Henke? Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill number 9335 passes and becomes ordinance number 8372. Bill number 9336?
Ordinance to amend Title II, item numbers 24 and 27, Chapter 245 Parks and Recreation, Article 1, Section 245, 180 of the Florissant City Code, Fees for Use to Adjust Fees for Summer Camp and Identification Cards.
Councilman Childrath moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Sayam. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Ordinance to amend Title II, Item Numbers 24 and 27, Chapter 245 Parks and Recreation, Article 1, Section 245, 180 of the Florissant City Code, Fees for Use to Adjust Fees for Summer Camp and Identification Cards.
Councilman Childrath moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Henke. Roll call, please.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childrath?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Before the final vote is- Oh, I'm sorry, why don't you read that?
Ordinance to amend Title II, Items Numbers, Item Numbers 24 and 27, Chapter 245 Parks and Recreation, Article 1, Section 245, 180 of the Florissant City Code, Fees for Use to Adjust Fees for Summer Camp and Identification Cards.
Thank you. Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment? Hearing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Egan?
No.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childrath?
Yes.
Henke? Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill number 9336 passes and becomes ordinance number 8373. Bill number 9337?
Okay, ordinance transferring the sum of $13,900 from account number 0350 Professional Services to account number 0329 Building Maintenance for the Purpose of Covering the Cost of Council Chamber Speaker System.
Councilman Childrath moves for a second reading, seconded by myself. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, didn't we allocate money within our budget two years ago for this? Year ago?
I think we did.
But I think this was covering more of the cost of it, if I remember correctly, and the repairs. I could be totally off. Do you... Mr. Egan?
I guess I'm concerned why it has an E status.
Because the budget's about to end.
I couldn't-
Just because it's the end of the budget.
Okay.
Yeah. That's why most of these are going through in three. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, and it's my recollection, we may have allocated money in last year's budget, and we may have allocated money for what you're looking at, that part of the system here, but I think this is for the-
Speakers.
The other things that we've added that has been a great help for me personally, because I can hear everything now, so I think that's the confusion, is the, is the original DICE reconfiguration versus the new sound system, so.
Do you have any other, Mr. Caputa?
Yes, sir.
Do you need more?
That's good.
Okay. Turn these all off. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Ordinance transferring the sum of $13,900 from account number 0350 Professional Services to account number 0329 Building Maintenance for the Purpose of Covering the Cost of the Council Chamber Speaker System.
Councilman Childrath moves for a third reading, seconded by myself. Roll call, please.
Egan?
Aye.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childrath?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ordinance transferring the sum of $13,900 from account number 0350 Professional Services to account number 0329 Building Maintenance for the Purpose of Covering the Cost of the Council Chamber Speaker System.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Hearing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Aye.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childrath?
Yes.
Henke? Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill number 9337 passes and becomes ordinance number 8374. Bill number 9338? Pardon me?
Ordinance authorizing mayor to enter into lease agreement with Yamaha Motor Finance Corporation USA for the golf, for the lease of golf cars supplied by TNT Golf Car and Motorsports.
Okay, Councilman Lee moves for a second, seconded by myself. Discussion. Mr. Lee?
Thank you. I know the city attorney's looking with Mr. Schmidt right now, so I'll just make a little bit of background that I want to thank Mr. Owen and Mr. Schmidt, who've been diligently trying to get this contract to us in order to pass it. Our current lease will expire on December 31st, so there's a bit of urgency to be able to get a contract signed so that the new company that can get their equipment in here. I'm also gonna note that we discussed this the other night, this will end up coming in more than $12,000 under budget, because it's a lesser price, and we'll save on the personal property tax. I did have some concerns that I was able to discuss as we were coming in this, and when Mr. Schmidt is ready, I will entertain a couple of quick questions. That was the urgency to try to get three readings, so that, because we need to have golf carts by the second of January, or we're not gonna be able to provide a service, so I think, I think they were planning on closing on the second. They're closing on the first already, I think they're gonna close on the second to help with this transition, and pray for good weather, but.
Well, let me go to Mr. Egan, and then maybe Mr. Schmidt will be done by then. Mr. Egan?
Yeah, my uncomfortable with this, uncomfortableness with this is, stems from the, the final email came at 6:00 PM this evening, and it just, you know, I just find it very uncomfortable and very unfortunate that, that an hour before we meet, I'm getting emails, and now that we still have some questions regarding the contract that's in front of me right now, so I'm, I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we, we get some great answers here, but, but seriously, why, why $1,800 when we're meeting at 19:30?
Mr. Schmidt, can you come up and give the answer to that? Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, I'll answer any questions to the best of my ability.
Why 6 o'clock?
I just got it at 5:30 this evening, and, and I do believe that the holiday had a lot to do with it. We were pushing to get this on the agenda because of the December 31st deadline. We were pushing for Yamaha to get us the paperwork, and it started as of last Tuesday, and Wednesday, and they were contacting Yamaha, which is out on the West Coast, and I just, I just got the information myself at 5:30 this evening.
Okay, I got a couple of quick questions.
I'll do my best.
Yeah, the first page that we've got here is blank.
I don't know why that happened. I forwarded, I forwarded the entire document to the city clerk, and my copy has all that on there. I don't know why your copies did not come out that way.
I don't either. I just printed it straight from that document.
Is there anything on that front page that concerns you, Mr. Hassel, because I can't see it, so.
All I can tell you is that the copy that Todd has now provided to me, obviously, is significantly different than the copy that you all are looking at, because there are major blanks contained in that document. Now, I didn't see it until Todd handed it to me, whatever it is, two, three minutes ago, but on a very quick review, it appears that the substantive provisions contained in the agreement itself are virtually identical, if not entirely identical, to the sample that we were provided with previously, that was then sent out to the city council as part of your packet. Now, those are the terms and conditions that are contained on pages one through four. Obviously, the city council didn't have Exhibit A in detail, and I'll, that's more of a business term than it is a legal term. Exhibit A is the equipment schedule. The copy that Todd now provided to me is full and complete, unlike the one that you all are looking at, and I'll leave it up to Todd to identify whether or not this is consistent with the RFP, the response to the RFP that he received. Similarly, the document that identifies that Yamaha Motor Finance Corporation will be financing the lease is full and complete. I don't see anything from a legal standpoint that is concerning to me. I know that it, like the terms and conditions of the lease agreement, require that the city needs insurance, an amount not less than $1 million, but that was something, I believe that, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, was a business term that we fully anticipated.
Correct.
The certificate of acceptance is, now that I can read it in its entirety, is typical, not concerning to me. The invoice, any invoice has concerned me, but this invoice is not different than a customary, ordinary invoice. The recitals are now full and complete, and then the authorization agreement, and from a legal standpoint, is not concerning to me. I don't see anything unusual about it. Thank you, sir.
And if you can turn to the, the last page of that lease, which lists the lease payments, my, my concern was, is it lists payments and it lists interest, and I'm just curious if that's just a, what are we actually paying versus, do we have to make an interest payment on those odd months, because it looks like we're paying just four, four payments totaling one amount, but then it shows interest of another $32,000, so I'm not-
That, that's my understanding, is we're making just four payments over the next four years. They just broke down the interest that was built in on the amortization schedule. Is that what you're referring to?
I'm looking at that, yep. It shows a due date, and then it shows, for example, February 15th, it shows a due date, and it shows a payment of $880, so.
It actually shows a payment of zero with interest-
Interest, I'm sorry.
$880.
Right.
And 27 cents.
All right, so I guess-
I can't interpret this as to whether or not that's interest that's accruing, that then becomes part of the payment that is encompassed on January 15, 2019, but I'll leave that to Todd.
What's your understanding of the total amount? Is your total amount 268, 41968?
That is correct, and, and on Exhibit A, which I believe is probably about the fifth page down, where it says equipment schedule, and, and I apologize that your copies didn't come up-
We don't have anything there. We can't read anything on-
Yeah, well, under number-
It's in your email, if you have your iPad.
Couldn't open on my phone, so.
Item number four under Exhibit A, where it says equipment schedule, says rental payments on the equipment shall be in the following amounts payable on the following schedule, and it says four annual payments in the amount of $67,104.92, and it also states under there, starting January 2018, due the 15th day of the month as follows, and it's got the four payments on January of 2018, January of 2019, 2020, and 2021.
So, are we comfortable with that, then?
I mean, it's as comfortable as I can get in five minutes.
Okay, so I guess my, my question would be, is, and this is a, we're gonna sign this lease and send it back to them. We can put an addendum on that last page that say, that says there will only be four payments, the, the interest is just a clarification of how much of that payment is interest?
We could certainly find that out, and if that is incorrect, I would recommend it. Again, that's assuming that the council wants to move forward with three readings this evening. If you don't, then it's a moot point, we can just find, get clarification. If you do, because of the timing of this, council has the opportunity to reconsider it at your next meeting, and if in fact our understanding, based upon what Todd has told us this evening, is incorrect, I would strongly recommend you move to reconsider and go back to square one, meaning you go back to a step prior to the final adoption.
Okay, I'm, I'm-
That's certainly an option.
I'm comfortable with that. The last thing is, and it's maybe in that, that I can't see, but this lease commences on January 2nd of 2018. When's the termination date of the lease? Is that in this document?
Yeah, the last, the last payment will be due on-
Understand the last payment, but when does the lease, when does the rental of our carts? I mean, our current rental is up December 31st.
Correct.
Is this going to be up December 31st, or is it gonna be up in January? And the reason I'm asking is, is that, for the reason that four years from now, if we're going to get a new lease, we can avoid a $10,000 or $12,000 personal property tax bill. So.
I understand.
Does it show a date in there?
It, it does not.
Okay, then I would like to. Pardon?
It, it says the last payment will be in January 2021. I think what Mr. Lee's asking as far as the end, termination of the lease itself.
Last payment December 21, right?
It'll be Jan- January 2021, the last payment.
Right, 21, you're right. So I'd, I'd like to, would you not like to have a termination date of December 31st in this contract, so that we know?
For personal property taxes, yes, I would.
For the rental, rental is up?
Yes, I would.
So we don't really have that in here, so, okay.
That is correct.
Alright, so based upon that, and because of the urgency, I, I still would be moving for three readings. And in the event that those things do not happen, we can do a, well, the mayor would not have to sign the contract, number one, but we would then do a motion to reconsider at the next meeting.
Correct.
Do you have no reason to believe, I know you've been in communication with these people, and we've, they've been very forthcoming and very, there's no reason to believe that they're not going to continue to be forthcoming and?
I'm not seeing any reason that they would not be.
Okay.
Okay, I, I have, I have a whole bunch of lights on here. Um, Mr. Egan, did you have?
Thank you. Mr. Hessel, a question for you. Is a vote to abstain, does that kill three readings this evening? Wow, let me think about that, Joe. There. I'll wait till it comes around again.
Alright, Mr. Hanky?
Yeah, uh, the fact that we can reconsider, and there is some rules in this, some questions. I really, and I'm maybe missing something here, Mike, I mean, why do we have to, why can't we do this in the first meeting in December, well ahead of the December 31st deadline? I mean, we can get all this stuff ironed out, have our third reading in the first in December, and we're done with it. Because if we can reconsider it anyway, December, what's your decision to reflect?
Well, I think the reason is, is that this company is not gonna move forward until they have a, an, a council approval to their contract.
But if they, if we have reconsideration, we signed a contract, and then say, never mind at the next council meeting, where does that, does it seem like a liability? You know, I mean, we, so they want a contract, we give a contract, and then the first meeting in December, say, well, no, this, this wasn't included, so now we're gonna say, never mind on the contract.
I, I also, I also believe that the mayor will not sign the contract and deliver it until those things are clarified.
Okay, that's, yeah, I, I had the same question as, as you, is once it passes, and if he signed it, because they're gonna have to see that it's an ordinance, right? And that's, I'm with you on this one, Mr. Hanky. Mayor?
Yeah, I, I will make sure that I'm on the same page with the golf committee before I sign it. We've been on the, we've been, uh, working together on this project for months and months, and, uh, even though we've had disagreements in other area, we've continued to, uh, work very professionally together on this particular project.
I have a follow-up question on, on that, Mayor, while I still have it. If, uh, for whatever reason, for whatever reason, you sign the contract, and for some reason, whatever the reason might be, we reconsidered that in December, but they've got a signed contract by you now, doesn't that just put us in some kind of liability?
No, I'm, I'm not gonna sign the contract until we're all on the same page.
Then how are we given, okay, that's what I don't understand. Then how are you giving them the go-ahead? I mean, it's not like, it's closed. I mean, either way, it's still an open contract. If you don't sign it, if you don't have, you know what I'm saying?
Then it's the same as waiting until the next meeting.
Exactly. So I don't understand.
But if we are on the same page, then we get, to get it going.
I think we are all pretty well on the same page.
I mean, I mean us and Yamaha. I mean, us and Yamaha.
Right, but then I believe you have the council too, to go with Yamaha. We just want these details in there. So if they knew it and said, ooh, there was just sort of a mishap and we rushed, but this will go through on there. I don't, I don't see the difference.
Yeah, and I think there's, you know, I think on that, though, when I mean liability, we have a signed contract that goes forward and it's signed, and then we say, never mind for whatever reason, then are they gonna sue us for, for vacating, for, for screwing up on the contract? Pardon my French. You know, I don't, I don't wanna get carted toward a horse here, where all of a sudden we got a liability, we say, we changed our mind if something goes wrong, and then we say, then we're, then we got another liability.
Well, I have.
We're not gonna sign the contract unless we.
Okay, it's fine.
Right.
And Mr. Hessel? Mr. Hessel, is it, it is not unusual in contracts that when a contract comes to you, that you make little addendums or clarifications of the contract and send it back, correct?
That can certainly be done.
So I mean.
I won't say it's usual, but it's not unusual.
Not unusual, that's what I'm trying to say. So I have, I have the faith that Mr. Schmidt and the mayor will work these details out and, and will not sign it unless it's taken care of. So, and he can send an email out telling everybody that he's clarified before. I just don't wanna get caught without golf carts. That's my concern, so.
I'm sorry, I have more lights. Mr. Parsons?
My, my question, Madam President, my question was basically the same question that Mr. Hanky had. I'm, I'm just wondering what the, uh, I guess the difference on us waiting until the next meeting, until now, what is, I guess, what is the danger of waiting until the next meeting?
They, uh, they have to, they have to get the carts all ready for shipment and make sure they have the right inventory and all that, it's the right color and all that kind of stuff to ship to us. It takes them a little while to get that ready. They can't just do it overnight. It's not like sending a pair of shoes.
It's typically a, a four, a four-week or one-month advance notice that they'll need to prepare a fleet with colors and, and the logos on the carts and things of that nature. They typically need a minimum of four weeks.
Alright, and the, their reason for sending the contract today, I mean, did we, was there any discussions before now for them to prepare this contract, like earlier in Nov- November or, or something like that, or?
No, we had an RFP that went out in late September, I believe. And, um, after reviewing it with the golf course committee and, and trying to get everybody on board with the same company, that's, that's where we're at now.
And I might point out that the bill actually reads that we are authorizing the mayor to enter into the lease agreement. So there has to be a leap of faith that the mayor is gonna do the right thing, and I believe that he will do that. So if he doesn't feel that it's in the best interest of the city, or that there's a problem with that, I'm sure he will not execute that lease agreement.
If, if that happens, I, you know, I'm expecting that we'll have the full and final copy before it gets signed, right?
Well, I, I think you're seeing the standard lease agreement. We don't see it, but.
Well, the e- the email, the email, there's not gonna be any changes from this email that we received today.
I wasn't able to see the email, so.
I, I just pulled it up on, on the tablet, so, you know.
Well, there would be changes to that email, because they're asking to change the date.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I mean.
You know what I'm saying? They're, they're already giving suggestions on what they want, because they, for one, it was to change the date, and the other was.
I think the, I think the co- the contract is silent on the termination date, the last date. I believe the contract's silent, and I think it'd just be a matter of clarifying that. I think the other things are in there, we just didn't see it in the copies that we had here.
The other thing, since we're not staying with the same vendor, then we're changing vendors, so the other vendor has no motivation to let us keep the existing fleet any longer than they have to.
And if we did, we'd have to pay personal property tax on it.
I mean, if it, it's gonna take at least four weeks for them to ready to fleet, I, you know, at this point, I don't, I don't know if we really have any other, other choice. So I'm, I'm just not comfortable with getting something at this late, late time.
Right. Well, I don't, the, now, this is me on the whim, but we've done it, we've, before, when we've had similar situations, I just called another meeting, once people had a chance to look at it. And if we could just get together for a vote. I know you don't wanna, I do it at 4:00 in the afternoon. But it has happened before that we have been brought in, and we, just on that vote. And I would do it at 4, 5, 5.
I'd like to point out that on this particular process, the council's been intimately involved the whole way. At least the council committee has been. It's not, it's been a collaboration between the administration and the council committee, so we have our eyes as wide open as we can get, I think.
Alright, well, I'm gonna get the other committee men light turned on, since every other light's on here. Councilman Childreth.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, the committee had some questions with the RFP when it went out about horsepower, and Mr. Lee and I, uh, talked to the manufacturer about that minor concern. It was splitting hairs. And I also, Mr. Lee and I also took it upon ourselves to call different courses that Yamaha's using, because we had, you know, some concerns. And the courses that Yamaha is at now, Lake of the Ozarks, some other places are more hilly terrain than Arc Horse. So I'm fully confident in this, this product. And, uh, we had some other minor concerns about some, uh, maintenance, uh, schedules and some other things that we, that our other vendor had, and they are going to provide, that our other vendor did. So I felt really good with that. And, uh, I, and this is, uh, $8,900 cheaper a year, and it says, nice product, so I feel confident with it. Thank you.
Okay. So, all in favor, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hessel?
The charter indicates that bills and resolutions may be passed on the day of their introduction by the affirmative vote of all members of the council who are present. An abstention is not an affirmative vote. An abstention is deemed to be a vote within the majority, but it is not an affirmative vote. So an abstention would not, would then not, if an abstention is made, then you would not have the affirmative vote of all of the council members, and it couldn't be read for final passage in one night.
But of those present, I know this has happened before, where a council person felt strongly and they could just leave before the roll call vote on the third reading, and then they're not present, correct?
That has happened. That is correct. So rather than an abstention, if you were in the men's room, that would be deemed not a vote, because you're not present.
How many can walk out?
Majority can't walk out.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, we'll be right back.
Yeah. Alright, so all in favor, and this is for the second reading. All in favor, aye, opposed.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into the lease agreement with Yamaha Motor Finance Corporation USA for the lease of the golf carts supplied by TNT Golf Cart and Motorsports.
Councilman Lee moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman Sheldroth. Roll call.
Egan, he's not here. Caputa?
No.
Sheldroth?
Yes.
Hanky? Bragano?
No.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
I get the third reading.
Move to call special council meeting, resolve this, and give the contract sign. Mayor, will you let us know when you have those details?
Certainly.
Right.
Absolutely.
And we'll just do it right away. Hopefully, it will be.
Uh, you sure are, but when you tell me you can't make the meeting, remember that it's a.
Okay, I, I, I will call the meeting.
As long as I remember the.
As soon as you get it, just call me, and I will be there.
That's correct.
Two in the afternoon.
Todd, let's get together tomorrow and see what we got.
Ready to go. Oh, there he is.
No, we'll, we'll get together tomorrow and see what we got.
The next item on the agenda is council announcements. Councilman Sheldroth?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank, thank all the residents in the city of Florissant for their several months of patience. With the MSD project on Graham Road, it is complete, and now the contractor is doing some site restoration. Thank you again for your patience.
Councilman Parsons?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, once again, I just want to make an announcement in regards to the Quasi-Prince Foundation Pancake Breakfast that is taking place on December the 10th, uh, at the James J. Egan Center in the gym. It begins at 9:00 AM until 11:00 AM. Uh, the pancake breakfast is, is for free. Um, however, they are taking donations. The Quasi-Prince Foundation provides support to families dealing with the effects of pediatric cancer. Um, it's an informational breakfast to hear the foundation's mission, learn how you can get involved, and how they plan to impact the St. Louis community. Uh, all the donations go towards the foundation's bereavement assistant program. This is basically in dealing with, well, as I said, pediatric cancer, and I, I think it's a worthwhile cause. If anybody can attend, uh, please try to attend on that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Yes, I'd like to give a shout out to team like I always do, any extra canned goods from Thanksgiving, any extra change in the cars. If you could run it down to team, it'd be much appreciated. They're always looking for volunteers also. And I spoke earlier about, uh, going to the St. Louis County Port Authority meeting, uh, over at Christian Hospital. Uh, as of December, uh, the Port Authority will now own all of Jamestown Mall. We do have a website to go to, uh, that will give you guys plenty of information and updates that come out, which is www.stlewisco.com/jamestown. One more time, www.stlewisco.com/jamestown. Give you guys, uh, updates. They'll be updating it quite a bit. Uh, there was about 40 elected officials there at the meeting. Uh, they didn't get into, you know, the demolition when the dates are coming up or anything like that. Uh, but it's just letting the people know that, uh, they do have an input, the public and the elected officials. They're trying to be very open with everything, uh, which is good to see. I'm not used to that here. But it is very nice to see that they're so open with everything and letting the public get involved and the elected officials of what is gonna go in there. So, uh, uh, I know that's not in the city of Florissant, but it's a big thing connected to us, and I think it does matter. Uh, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Egan?
Thank you, Madam President. Two items this evening. The Atonement Lutheran's Men's Club Christmas Tree Lot is open. It's located down the street here at 1285 New Florissant, 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM daily. They open 11:00 AM Saturday, and Sunday they open at noon. They're a great charity. They have some really great trees down there this year. Uh, I'll be working a couple of shifts for my good friends down there. Come by and see us. Number two, uh, the St. Ferdinand Barbecue Tournament is very, very proud to announce our recipient for the 2018 event. Cooper Tracy lives here in the, in Florissant. He is the granddaughter of one of our beloved employees, and he's been diagnosed with cancer the last month. So the St. Ferdinand Tournament, you'll hear about it every single time from now on, uh, at the council meetings, is gonna be to benefit Cooper Tracy, and we hope you guys come by and see us when we start that event up in March. Thank you.
Councilman Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, yes, if you own, you own a firearm, make sure you secure that firearm. Do not leave it in your vehicle. And, uh, make sure you keep it, keep it locked up in, in your home. Do not leave it in an unlocked vehicle. Uh, make sure you, make sure you lock your vehicles, uh, make sure you keep your, your homes locked up, uh, make sure you, you get it hold, join your Neighborhood Watch program. Very good program that the city has offered with Neighborhood Watch, and, um, we're always looking for members. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, just want to, uh, echo what, uh, Mr. Jones said earlier. The, uh, meeting today was, uh, well, well-attended from force and officials. Besides Mr. Jones and I, we also had our Senator Gina Walsh, uh, our state reps, Gretchen Banger, Jay Mosley, Cor Faith Walker, and our county, uh, county representative, uh, county council member Rochelle Walton Gray, along with Blackjack council members, and also Hazel School District was very well represented. Uh, this is, uh, as was said, is in, in our backyard almost. Um, the Jamestown Mall is a very large blighted property now, and I commend, uh, County Executive Stenger and the county council for taking control of this situation. They now have total control of the property. It will, within the next couple of days, they're gonna be closing. And, uh, so they've asked for public input. They really don't have, I don't think they have any preconceived ideas of what this is gonna become. They're gonna issue RFPs and, and hope to attract investors to invest in that property. It's somewhat challenged by the geology of the location being next to all the sinkholes and also having flood plain nearby. Um, did appoint Steve Weismiller to be our first Director of Information Technology. He will take a, take, that will take place on December 1st with the new budget. Um, Steve will. Steve will, uh, take charge of all, uh, all the different IT programs in the City of Florissant, he'll be in charge of all of our IT personnel, and I have every faith that Steve, who, uh, has been with our police department for quite a number of years, will do a great job in that capacity, and I think this IT will help us to, uh, bring Florissant into, uh, into very efficient territory. MSD is asking, uh, our patrons to, uh, remember the word fog, F-O-G, they want you try to reduce or eliminate putting fat, oil, or grease into your sewer system, because it clogs it up, creates all kinds of problems, not only in the lines, but also at the treatment plant, so they'd like for you to put the grease into some other container, let it harden, uh, they have these lids that they're giving away, you can put this lid on there, and then at, once the grease is hardened, you can just throw that away, but keep the lid for the next time, just kind of a reminder to, uh, re- reduce the amount of, uh, those substances going into the drain. Here in Florissant, we, uh, had a great opening for Raising Canes, uh, last week, and, uh, they have, still have lines, and they have, uh, off-duty police officers directing traffic to Raising Canes, is probably gonna set up another attendance record. Uh, the Ferguson Florissant School District, uh, started a new ropes course at the Little Creek Nature Area, so congratulations to them. Uh, Mayor of Jefferson City, uh, Mayor Turgid and I are urging everybody, especially in the holidays, to try to buckle up and phone down, uh, cell phones are killing our kids, guys, and, uh, the texting is out of control. We have it illegal here in Florissant, we're hoping that the state legislature will make it illegal for everybody to text while driving, uh, it's the number one cause of teenage, teenage deaths now, and it's growing, uh, it's gonna take over, it's gonna be the number one cause of death pretty soon of everybody. Um, I was honored to be with Mayor Sly James of Kansas City, I was appointed as a, a member of the first board of directors of the Missouri Mayors United for Progress, these are mayors from all over the state of Missouri, uh, we meet, uh, about every other month, uh, to try to talk about priorities, not only for the eastern side of the state, but for the western side of the state, we've had a lot of things in the news where we're concerned about the legis, what the legislature's gonna do, and if all the mayors of the state are united together, and all the cities are united together, it's much less likely that the state legislature can pick, pick on us over here. Now, into the holiday season, we got a lot of sightings of Santa, uh, we got, we got letters to Santa, uh, and if you wanna have a letter from Santa to your, uh, little one, uh, get ahold of the JFK Center, uh, and at nine two one forty-two fifty, we can arrange to have a letter from Santa sent to you, uh, or you can visit with Santa at Sunset Park Nature Lodge on Saturday, December ninth, from nine to eleven, and, uh, just call the James J. Egan Center, or the, uh, or the, uh, JFK Center for that. We have a Christmas house decorating contest that's, uh, that's going on until, um, December fourteenth, and they'll be judged by the Youth Advisory Commission, and if you want your house judged, again, call the Egan Center or the JFK Center. Last year, we had a snowman building contest, but we didn't have any snow, so I, I'm gonna try to repeat that track record, we're gonna have another snowman building contest, and again, hope that we don't get any snow. And then Sanders Helpers are gonna be at the James J. Egan Center, this is, if you wanna have three hours off to go shopping, and you got little kids, they have to be, uh, potty-trained, but if you got little kids that are potty-trained, uh, up to age twelve, three to twelve, uh, you can have them, uh, at the James J. Egan Center from nine to noon, where you go shopping on December sixteenth, uh, the cost is, uh, is not, a resident's twenty dollars, non-resident twenty-five. Not done yet, we got Christmas in Old Town with Santa, uh, this coming Saturday, December second, from two to four thirty, and we're gonna light those lights of the Queen and her court at five fifteen, and then Project Liftoff is the same night, Saturday night, this is our twenty-ninth Project Liftoff, I can't, I can't believe it's been twenty, next year will be the thirtieth anniversary. I'm starting to see kids that I had at the first Project Liftoffs bring their own kids up to these things now, so, anyway, that'd be Saturday night at six thirty to nine thirty at the James J. Egan Center. And then lastly, winter break camp, I've announced this before, we got winter break camp for, uh, when the school's out, you can, uh, call the Egan, James Egan Center, sixty dollars a child, for non-residents, a hundred and twenty, and then also, don't forget, the ice rink is open, and we have a free skate on New Year's Eve. Thanks.
The next and last meeting of the year for the city council will be on Monday, December eleventh, two thousand seventeen. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I forgot to mention, uh, all the Facebook guys out there, uh, the chief will be aware, as soon as this meeting's done, I'll be contacting him about all the Christmas stuff in the neighborhoods that's getting trashed out on the houses. Uh, we have no answer for you guys, but to keep your lights on, uh, but as far as these juvenile kids, uh, it's hard to keep up with them ripping all the Christmas stuff up in the neighborhoods, guys, but the police department will be aware of it, thanks.
Thank you. Again, the next meeting will be on Monday, December eleventh, two thousand seventeen. Councilman Jones moves to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion is carried, the meeting is adjourned, thank you all for attending.